Okay, that's great. And I'm Deanne Wegwart and I am the Chair for the Commission on Diversity Awareness and I called the meeting to order at 1:32 PM on June 7th. I think that the first order of business is roll call and I am here. Commissioner Duke? Not here today?
Hold on one second, Dee. I'm actually just still letting a few more people in apologies. It looks like there's-
That's great. Let's, let's do that.
Okay, I think I've added everyone now.
That's great. Okay, so is Commissioner Duke here? I don't think so yet anyway. Commissioner Hardy?
Hi, I'm here.
Great, welcome, thank you. Commissioner Gubler? Not here today?
Mandy is in the meeting. I don't know if she's available to unmute.
There we go, I got it. He was frozen, but yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Thank you for being here. Commissioner Pino?
Here.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Kona?
I'm here, thank you.
Wonderful. And Commissioner Tucci?
I'm here, thank you.
We have actually a good turnout. Thank you all for being here today. This is wonderful. And reading our mission statement and land acknowledgement. Jessica, maybe you could scroll that up on the screen if you're willing? I can read our mission statement as a commission to foster support, respect, awareness and appreciation of diversity among all citizens of Flagstaff. And would someone read the land acknowledgement, please?
I will do that. The Commission on Diversity Awareness humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you for reading that and I always feel like that has special significance for us as a Commission on Diversity. Really powerful words. Our single agenda item today is the regional plan SWAT analysis. And we have guests here and if you don't mind, I think I'll just let you guide the meeting. Does that work?
That sounds great. Thank you for having me back for this special meeting. Looking forward to discussion on the regional plan today. So if you remember, I was with the commission at your last meeting and I presented on the regional plan in our process for updating that plan. And one of the things that we're doing at the start of that process is doing a SWAT analysis with each city and county commission. So I sent out some instructions and it looks like a good number of you received those and started to put ideas into the digital whiteboard that, that we are using for that SWAT analysis. So what I'm gonna do is share my screen and pull up that digital whiteboard space and then check whether anyone needs the link to this or didn't get the instructions and I can go over that a little bit more. Sorry, let me pull back up the chat here. Alright, so it looks like not all commissioners have logged into this system. Does anyone need or want the link so that they can contribute to this?
This is Commissioner Christine Tucci. I did not have time to contribute, but I do have a link in an email that I can locate.
Alright, I will, thanks for that. I will go ahead and just put the the group map link in the chat again if anyone wants to access that right now. So my plan for today was really to give some, some additional time if anyone needed it to populate the whiteboard with ideas. If you would like to do that, if, if there are no further ideas from commissioners, then we can go through these items. You can ask questions about the regional plan. If there was an idea that you had that you weren't sure about, feel free to ask a question and I can hopefully provide an answer. So why don't we start out with just checking in with commissioners in terms of whether people wanted additional time today to populate this board with ideas. After the meeting, I will be closing this. So this is kind of the last opportunity to populate this board with ideas. Any, anybody want to continue typing in, in here?
Hi Jordan, this is Commissioner Pino. I was working on this this morning and to be honest, I struggled a little bit with the scope in terms of what information you were looking to have populated. I didn't remember if you wanted more on kind of like the formatting and readability or on the goals themselves. And if, if we are looking at the goals themselves, if there's any way that we could provide, if you have other materials that provide more of an insight as to what the community has requested to be prioritized, I think that could help in the conversation.
Sure. So our intention was to keep it higher level than maybe getting at specific goals and policies and you know, how they've been implemented, how successful they've been. If, if you have a comment specific to a goal and policy, goal or policy, we're always receptive to, to hearing that input. But it was, the intention was to kind of keep it high level and really about anything that you saw in the regional plan. It could be readability. It could be about things that were missing from the plan that you think should be in the next one. But again, maybe a slightly higher level than, than getting specific about the goals and policies.
Thanks Jordan. Okay, then from my perspective, again Commissioner Pino, I'm good to move forward after this discussion and close it out.
I, I don't know, this, this is Dee Wegwart. I don't know how you have envisioned proceeding with our discussion on this, but I would have to say that reading through the plan, I was actually, it's impressive. I was overwhelmed with the depth and breadth of of thought and planning that went into that. And I was also struck at certain points about how much has changed since the last time this was looked at and you wouldn't think so much that, that there'd been that much change in our community in 10 years, but my goodness. I also felt like as I was trying to add things into the SWAT here, that it would help me if we were to discuss this, the, each of these areas as a group. I, I know this is a, this is a weakness on my part, but I kind of think while I talk and sometimes sitting by myself is, doesn't feel as productive as building on the ideas of other people as well. So just where I am with it and thank you for listening to all that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, I say, so we have done that in the past with, with other commissions. Just go each sort of box here by box, go through the ideas and have some discussion about them. So why don't we go ahead and do that? And feel free, any commissioners that want to keep putting ideas in here, I'll try to, to add in some notes as we have some discussion here, but we'll just start with strengths and start going through the ideas that, that are here. If that sounds good.
If I could add just what, since I've already talked too much.
Sorry.
If I could add one more thought and, and I'm kind of stating the obvious here, but for the commissioners who are present, I think that of course, anything that you would want to add, you should add. So we shouldn't be limiting ourselves, but at the same time, I'm going to ask everyone to be mindful of keeping on our diversity hats as we go through this because that actually is our special thing to address and keep in mind as we're looking at the plan for the future of the community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that comment and appreciate that reminder about kind of the hat that you wear. And I think for us as staff, we have identified diversity, equity and inclusion as an area that the current regional plan maybe wasn't so strong on. So that's very, very useful to us in terms of any comments with, with, with your kind of professional hat on.
I've got kind of a, just a, a question that just has to do with process.
Sure.
Once you get this, and by the way, thank you so much for meeting with us and I'm like, unlike Dee, I really commend this process. When we did our survey for the Commission on Diversity, we actually included in the publication on our website all of the raw material, all the raw data. And that's because, you know, Dee and I were the primary interpreters of the data or analysts of the data and of course, I'm going to bring my own biases. So it's always good to have the raw data out there. I'm wondering if there's going to be any place where this SWAT raw data will be available to the public. And I also want to say that I think the SWAT analysis is really as unbiased as you can get and I really appreciate you using it. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yes, we will make every, so every single SWAT has been a part of a public meeting. So there is public record. Obviously that is not a very accessible way to, to kind of access the results of the SWAT analysis. So we are actually compiling, this program allows you to download all the raw data as Excel or CSV files. So we are in the process of starting to aggregate all of that data into kind of a usable one spreadsheet that we will make available. And then we are going to go through a process of coding the responses and producing a summary report that will send back out to each commission that we've met with, as well as make that publicly available on our regional plan update website and probably some other places as well. So thank you for that question, but yes, we will make this, the raw data available. Alright, so let's go ahead and unless there are any other questions or comments, we can just go ahead and dive into the strength section here. And we'll just go idea by idea and add comments, make edits as, as necessary. So we have first here, for strength holistic and inclusive of a variety of city planning needs. This was a comment by, I believe, Marcella. Anything you wanted to add on, on that one? I think it's, to me, that comment is kind of getting at the, the scope of the, of the regional plan and just the, the wide variety of topics that are covered. So I'm not sure that there's a lot to add to that, but any questions, comments or clarifications?
This is Commissioner Pino. No, just to say, I think there's a couple of other that, others that reference this. I just think that the, like, I couldn't think of a topic that wasn't included, which I think is a really strong thing for a city plan. And there may be some nuances, you know, within some of the topics that can be addressed, but for the most part, it feels very inclusive of all of the different city planning needs that have come up in discussions, at least from our commission's perspective and generally kind of as a resident of the city.
Great, great feedback. And I'm actually going to switch us over because I think you're right that some of these are I combined some of these. So I'm going to combine these two. The plan is multifaceted and addresses many aspects of our community. Those two comments, this won't get rid of each comment. It'll just sort of group them in a, in a bucket. Alright, so awareness of utility of partnerships with other jurisdictions, organizations and citizens. So that's kind of looking at the wide range of people that we are, or at least did in the last regional plan, partner with in terms of getting input on where to go with the regional plan. So that was a comment from Jean. Any thoughts or additional comments on that one?
Um, yes, I just, I really want to, you know, acknowledge that things like the planning process with Southside Community and things like that are, are really strengths. But I guess the question that I have to go with that is as a planning document, I don't know if there's, you know, any directives or, you know, there's so many different jurisdictions. I struggled with this because you've got the county, you've got the city, you've got the state, you've got all these, you know, complexities, the tribal communities, the nations. It's it's, it's so important to do these and I think there's an awareness of that, but there's also a real complexity that's beyond my scope of understanding frankly. I don't know all the intricacies of all this. So anyway, that's my only comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It is exceedingly complex, especially, you know, we're in a unique position here in the city. As being the county seat, a place that people travel to for medical care. And you know, the plan does call out that it is intended not only for the people that live here, but the people that travel here to access the services that are located here in town. But in terms of how the plan is used, it's pretty limited to, you know, our city government and then the, and then Coconino County, but within the regional planning area. So just a reminder, that's about a 500 square mile kind of box around the city that sort of provides some additional context in addition to the county's comprehensive plan. So that's kind of how that makes its way into their planning efforts. But it doesn't really impact decision-making outside of that regional planning area. Don't know if that fully answered your question. I can go into more specifics about how the plan is, is used in the city. If that's helpful.
Jordan, that clarifies it for me and I just don't know if that needs to be edited into there, but that clarifies it. I mean, all we're our only jurisdiction is city governance.
Okay.
Okay, that's a clarification. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to add a comment here that just talks about the, the complexity. Alright, so I see another one. I'm going to group this one with these guys here, comprehensive and scope. Add that there. Use of multiple potential scenarios for planning. Yes, good comment. And again, Jean, that was your comment. Is this specifically related to the, the section on scenario planning?
It's that and it's also some of the land use stuff had these, you know, scenarios involved and I just think that's a, a great way of laying it out and, and making it for somebody like me user-friendly.
Yeah, and one of the, I think going along with that, so we, we will be doing the scenario planning again where, you know, we'll work with the community to kind of develop various scenarios. And I thought there's one, I want to, can you see the regional plan here that I just pulled up?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to just highlight a, a really useful table. And I think expanding on this in the future may be useful. Sorry, I kind of went way down the document here.
Are you talking about the ABC and then the E as a planning? Yeah, that was great.
So on the, on the right-hand side here, and let me zoom in a little bit, but this is kind of, this is why we do scenario planning in each you know, regional plan update. And the idea is to use data and assumptions that we have a good understanding of to kind of look at if we develop in different ways, what, what does that mean for our community? So these are kind of the indicators, the primary indicators that we were looking at in the last regional plan in terms of total land consumed, things like water, total water demand. And how we grow and develop has real, real implications for a lot of these various indicators. So I just bring this up because I thought to go along with that comment that this was, I think, also a strength of, of the plan. But also something that's probably going to look different this time around. We probably have, you know, certain assumptions that maybe don't hold as well anymore. Our community, I think, as, as, I'm not sure who made that comment, but a lot has changed in the last 10 years. And a lot of change is not linear in the sense that, you know, going from a population of 60,000 to 70,000 doesn't necessarily look the same as going from 70 to 80. So just wanted to highlight that. So thanks for that comment. Exceptionally strong planning for open spaces. Jean? Any additional comments on that one? What was it that, that stood out to you as particularly strong?
Just the, just all the consciousness that this town has and, you know, the FUTS is wonderful and the Observatory Mesa and there was a lot of involvement, like when Lowell wanted to change some things and stuff like that. So there's just, you know, this is something that Flagstaff, I believe, does well.
I would, yes. I'm going to add that in there. We do, I think, very well on that, on that front when compared to many communities of the same size. Evidence-based data and strategic projections. And Jean, was this kind of related to that scenario planning? We, I know we have data kind of scattered throughout the plan and maybe that's what you were referencing.
I think it was more that you integrated a lot of evidence base, a lot of data and used principles of strategic planning and so it's not specific to scenarios. It's just, you know, the, the method that you've used, I think was, you know, has, is strong.
So kind of woven throughout the text, the goals, policies. Scenario planning is, we, it was grounded in evidence-based
Yes.
information. Great. Right, modes of transportation. Apparently I added that one. Just to make sure, did anyone, does anyone want to claim this one? I may have added this in as an example and never deleted it. If that's the case, I will go ahead and delete it unless people agree with it, then I will leave it in.
Well, I, I, at the risk of speaking up too much.
No, please.
I don't agree with it. I think we can do better.
Great. I like that feedback.
There are certain things though, that I would like to, that, that are already here and not disagreeing, Jean, but but I really enjoy the bus system and I really think we're very fortunate to have the trails that we have and so forth. So not to lose, we have some strengths that, that maybe we need to build on and, and make sure we don't lose.
Yeah, no, it's a mixed bag for sure.
Any votes for, or how democratically should we do this? In terms of transportation, I mean, I feel inclined to, to delete it and let any of you with, with kind of a, a different. Yeah, I'm going to remove this and let any commissioner that wants to add in a more clear strength.
That, that seems fair. I think that that topic will emerge as we go through the rest of this.
Great. And then last on the strengths, we have the intent to preserve the natural environment surrounding Flagstaff is a recurrent theme. And yeah, similar to open spaces, this was a comment.
That was mine. Yeah, and I was gratified to see that it, it sort of followed through the, the whole document in various ways and just the concept that we live in this beautiful place and part of the plan should be not to ruin that. And, and I appreciate that as part of the plan and would like to see that maintained for sure in the, the future plan.
Great. Alright, I think that does it for the strengths. Any final comments on the strengths or additions that, that anyone would like to see there?
If, if I could just chime in, for those of you who did fill out some things here in advance and for those of you who didn't, please feel free to add your comments as we go. This is our big chance to, to have a voice.
And if anyone needs refreshers on how to, or where you need to click for certain things, I'm happy to, to go over that too. So don't, don't hesitate to just chime in and say, I don't know how to do that.
That's helpful, Dee and Jordan. Jordan, is this getting at what you needed? Do you feel like this is the right level of depth and are there other specific topics that you want to make sure are represented? Maybe we can come to that second one after we look at the rest of the SWAT, but just wanted to second.
No, this is, this is great. I think this is a good level of detail. And yeah, no, no real comments on the content here or, or edits needed from my perspective. So it's just, if there are additional thoughts, just please don't hesitate to, to add them. If you're unsure and want to sort of talk about something before putting it in, feel free to do that too and.
Sounds good, thank you.
Right. Let's move on to weaknesses then. Alright, let's, starting out with one that I couldn't agree with more is that appendix B could use a table of contents. This was Marcella.
Hi, yeah, that was mine. I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory that it's really well formatted when you get into it, but I think just, you know, similar to the web has a really nice kind of flow with the links. It'd be great to see something similar in appendix B for people who, you know, as it's recommended are short on time.
Yeah, and we do, we, we actually do have some standalone documents that emulate appendix B, like a goals and policies cheat sheet and stuff like that. That probably could be clearer, more clearly referenced in the plan. But the other thing I wanted to point out about appendix B and I, I doubt anyone caught this level of detail, but when we were, when the, when the plan was adopted, I was not here, but when the plan was adopted in 2014, appendix B was also supposed to contain strategies to achieve goals and policies. And that was never adopted. So appendix B kind of stands alone as maybe not a very useful part of the regional plan, but I just wanted to highlight that strategy component because I think as we move into the next regional plan, one of the challenges that we have heard from a lot of commissions is that even though the plan is really comprehensive, 500 plus policies is really difficult when it comes to decision-making in terms of knowing what the trade-offs are, how different policies fit together. And that was supposed to be a part of appendix B that never was officially adopted in terms of strategically implementing the various policies, goals and policies. So I just- So I just wanted to highlight that and appreciate that comment.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that makes a lot of sense. I think I, I, and maybe to your point, there's a better way to reference the summary documents. Maybe it's its own section. Because I think like knowing which ones to go to for a quick review can be challenging. So maybe each section has like a visual. And for the policies, there may be a way to visually map which ones are interconnected. I need to think about that more, but that could be one way to approach it.
I think just having that note is really helpful too. So I'm just gonna add in a note here about implementation.
Sure.
Add two comments. All right. So number two, goals and policies of the plans in relation to diversity are not explicit or inclusive of methods to incorporate diverse voices. Sorry about that. And this was Jean. Yeah. Do you mind talking about that a little bit more? I think I understand what, what you're saying and probably agree wholeheartedly, but.
I'm sorry, I had to step away for a minute. Which one are you on?
Not a problem. So number two, the second in the weaknesses section here. The comment is goals and policies of plans in relation to diversity are not explicit or inclusive of methods to incorporate diverse voices.
Yeah, I just, you're gonna see this comment from me in several, several different incarnations. I'm thinking basically of structural, you know, structural concerns, structural and institutional racism, things that are worked into the, you know, the way our policies are written and stuff like that. So it's very, it's, it's a little bit more subtle. But when you think about things like the way the contracting for the reclaimed water for Snowball happened has to do with, there's no, there's, there's no way of factoring into that. The water content, the, the, you know, what is in the water and how it's, you know, for cultural concerns. I mean, it's not in the laws. And so, you know, all those lawsuits and stuff, they really, there was no law to predicate anything but a privileging of economics and privileging of kind of dominant culture considerations. That's what's in the law. So it's, I don't know how else to say it. That's just one example right there.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about is being aware as we, even, I wish there could be like a, a, not a commission, some kind of study group or something like that. On, you know, just a fine-tooth comb going over policies and ordinances on the city level for that very thing, you know, for that privileging in the law. I don't know, this is way beyond my pay grade, but I gotta tell you, it's there, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, yeah, again, for us as staff, what you've hit on here is something that we have also identified that's missing. And, you know, the, the regional plan is, at, at the state level, they call it a general plan. And that's because it's intended to kind of be general, a high-level plan guiding a community vision. But even saying that, so, you know, we're, we're not, the, the plan is not changing law when it is adopted. It's supposed to move the needle continuously over the plan's lifetime. But when you don't have goals and policies that talk about disparate impacts, systemic racism, structural racism, you know, structural inequalities across many very, various demographics and kind of framing your goals and policies in that way. That needle's not going to be moved when it comes to implementing the goals and policies through ordinances, through zoning code changes, through budgetary decision-making, at least in the sense that this is a reference document for those decisions. The current regional plan, I would say, takes more of a, an equality lens than an equity lens in the sense that it talks about treating people situations the same versus understanding that there are existing inequalities that are not rectified by treating everyone the same. So that's kind of my two cents on that topic too, and appreciate that. I think Jean may have dropped off here, so maybe she didn't hear what I was saying there or disagreed significantly.
This is Dee. I appreciate what you're saying and I think that, that you're getting to the heart of what Jean was talking about. Yeah. And I don't know that those of us, myself, being white, would be able to be that fine-tooth comb to go through anything and really recognize this for what it's worth. So that also is an issue. Oh, Jean's back, I think.
Technical, technical.
Sorry, sorry about that. I kept, I kept rambling before realizing you had dropped off. So sorry about that.
Well, it was, yeah, I, I hit a button and I was gone. So anyway.
That's life.
I'm sorry. Let's just move on. I, I, that was operator error.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Moving on to number three here. While cultural diversity is addressed, the plan does not address intervening on or with the complexity and adverse effects of systemic institutional racism. And this was Jean as well. And I think I was kind of touching on some of this when you dropped off. So, but feel free to add your two cents.
No, that's just, I know that I, as I was listening to you, you were saying exactly what I was talking about.
Yeah. And I think the other piece that I, I wanted to touch on here that I think is problematic too. So there's a whole section in the plan on heritage preservation. And when it comes to the cultural aspects of heritage preservation, the plan is fairly transactional. It's about what do these things offer in terms of, you know, economic development in our, in, in the city of Flagstaff. I think the few goals and policies that we have related to indigenous cultures are fairly transactional in that regard. You know, what, how are they contributing to our economic base, that kind of thing? I'm not sure that that's an appropriate end to that conversation for a future regional plan. So just wanted to throw that in there too.
I'm so thrilled to hear that.
Great. All right. Needs to address economic disparities and in, impact of those disparities. And Jean, again, you're up. Want to add anything to that?
No, I just think it needs to be recognized and I think it needs to be, you know, even if you can have some strategies for addressing the, you know, things like, you know, once again, you've got, using Snowball as an example, you've got a lot of skiers, you've got a lot of recreational people that really appreciate the, the resource. And then you've got people who've been damaged by it. So, and a lot of this boils down to money. If there wasn't a lot of money being made. You know, it's that transactional piece that you said, so I think there just needs to be an awareness in the planning of the disparate impacts.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's, I appreciate the example there with Snowball. You know, one of the things that we probably have a better sense of today than we did 10 years ago too, is how existing economic disparities in terms of where people live, the resources that they have access to really impact people throughout their entire lives. And I think that conversation is pretty absent from this regional plan too. One of the things that we are trying to do as part of the, the regional plan update is work on an opportunity mapping or opportunity index to kind of look at where opportunity is more limited in town. And have some conversation there about what we're seeing in research as far as, you know, high concentrations of certain characteristics that lead to that sort of negatively impact later life outcomes, things like educational attainment, income, health. Where you live really impacts those things later in life. And how we develop and grow is a key input to what our places look like and the resources that people have access to. So that's, I guess, my two cents on, on disparities existing and, and
Excellent.
addressing those. Greater need for planning for public transportation. Jean, you've got great ideas in here. These are all, I feel like we're kindred spirits here or something.
I'm talking too much. I just, I live in a neighborhood where there is no bus service except for the, you know, by, by request. Special needs busing with Mountain Lion. So on the other hand, if I, you know, lived where Dee lives, you know, she's totally, you know, oriented towards the buses and I, I would like to be, but I would never get anywhere. Anyway.
Yeah. Public transportation is always hard and apologies if this is kind of talking down or this is known amongst you all. But one of the keys to a successful public transit system is something called fare box recovery. The idea, the, what that means is what portion of your fare is covering the cost of you taking that ride? So in the U.S., we have notoriously bad fare box recovery. Most public transportation systems, it's something like, you know, you're only covering, you know, 10 to 20% of the cost of your transportation through your fare. And then the rest is subsidized. Of course, we heavily, heavily subsidized sort of personal auto transportation through other means. But, you know, Mountain Lion actually is one of the better systems out there in terms of smaller cities. They, I think, wish that our, trying to think how to kind of put this. We, we work closely with, with Mountain Lion when it comes to trying to be supportive of public transportation in our goals and policies. But there is probably no single factor more important for successful public transportation than how we use our land. And that's kind of the bread and butter of the regional plan. We don't amend the regional plan frequently to, to continue to try to be supportive of public transportation. I don't necessarily have an answer for what that looks like, but I guess that's all to say another great comment and consideration as we go into the next plan in terms of how we are more closely aligning our land use decisions with, with Mountain Lion and, and thinking about public transportation throughout the land use goals and policies as well. All right. Plans to provide housing opportunities to all economic sectors and eliminate homelessness need to be expanded and more aggressive. So it's Dee.
Yeah, that was mine. I was, as I was reading through this, I, those words are actually words from the plan. Provide housing opportunities to all economic sectors was wording from the plan and eliminate homelessness. And I'm thinking, you know, whatever the plan was at that time. First of all, it hasn't really been hugely successful. And I don't mean that as a criticism of the plan directly, but times being what they are have, have changed and made things worse. And, and so whatever the plan was, it's, it's going to have to be more impactful now to make a difference with those things. It's, it's so much harder now than it was 10 years ago, I think, for people who are struggling with housing situations here in Flagstaff.
Yeah, absolutely. And we are in a position with the next regional plan that we are benefiting from the 10-year housing plan now, which goes into a lot more detail when it comes to how we're going to address affordable housing in, in the city. So we're gonna probably rely pretty heavily on that document to give us some updated goals and policies, maybe some more specific ways that we can address housing needs.
Yeah, I, I also am, would be the first to admit that I am not the person to answer this question or solve this problem. I just, I just know that for sure we're not there and we're kind of losing our footing as the housing becomes more expensive.
Yeah. And, you know, the, just to add to the complexity, one of the things that we have seen increase over the last 10 years is the number of housing units that are going to things like short-term rentals, investor properties or out-of-town investment properties that are being used as, as short-term rentals. And of course, you know, many residents here have accessory dwelling units or homes that they, that they do, that they use for short-term rentals as a way to, you know, afford to live here too. But the, the, the use of housing units as short-term rentals does impact our house, our housing supply negatively in terms of people who are full-time residents. I think the last, the, the last time that I looked at data for short, full unit, short-term rentals in Flagstaff, it was something in the range of 1,500 to 2,000 units. And that was just from a private company that provides data on, on that. So it may, you know, it, it fluctuates certainly from year to year, but it's a substantial portion. And we are, you know, preempted at the state level from regulating that in any sort of substantial way. And how do we get around those things that we don't have control over? I don't think I have a, a great answer for that at this point either.
No, no. And, and I think that this, this concept, I remember making a comment in one of the other SWAT areas about something like this. So I bet we'll get back to this issue too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Well, thank you. Difficult to identify which themes are prioritized by the city's residents versus by the planning committee. And this was.
Hi, this is me, Commissioner Pino. This is some, similar to the comments that I had earlier in the discussion and that like, in providing feedback on the organization of the plan, it's hard to know, you know, are the, you know, are the specific plan items listed in a priority order? Are they alphabetical? It's also just hard to know which ones are of greater importance and the rationale for why they landed on the plan to begin with. So I don't know if there's like maybe a background document that's somewhere that I missed or if that can be referenced like in the plan with some sort of like, you know, a pop out to like, here is a survey response that said 80% of Flagstaff residents think this policy area is important. Or some way to just kind of connect like which, which are the priority areas.
Great point. And probably no surprise that I don't have a, a very good answer in terms of, I don't, I think there is probably a file somewhere that has meeting notes and various materials from the, the Citizen Advisory Committee that kind of oversaw the development of the regional plan. But again, there was no prioritization scheme or strategic implementation document that was adopted as part of the, of the regional plan. So that information is kind of lost into, you know, So that information is kind of lost into, you know, folders on a computer somewhere, um, and they're not referenced when making decisions. So huge, huge opportunity, I think, in the next regional plan to think about that.
Yeah, super challenging. And I mean, I think maybe there's a way to pull from recent surveys, like I would almost be, you know, like the surveys that rotate through the City of Flagstaff's website, if you look at the last two years, maybe there's a couple of specific questions you can pull from there, just in absence of having a more robust you know, background for the for the content that was selected, but I just I do think it's kind of really hard as a as somebody that's reading the plan, the plan, knowing that resources are finite, to think about how all of this is actually like when it comes down to which policy is prioritized over another pa- policy and how the the voice of the citizens of Flagstaff is being represented through that process.
Yeah, absolutely. And yeah, not all of the policies within each goal are created equal. And I think you raised uh that point about limited resources. That's critical. We don't have unlimited resources to achieve every policy that's in there, but with no understanding of the impact of each policy, how do we make that decision? Super critical. All right, um, any other comments, questions on the items here and weaknesses? Seeing none, I will move on to opportunities. All right, so let's start off with a good one on implementation. Um, so strategies for including more teeth in planning for change legally. Was Jean.
Yeah, and you know, you just addressed one of the things that is so frustrating because, you know, with this rapid increase of short term rentals in the, you know, context of we've got so much housing, um, um, you know, crisis going on. But there are state forces that, you know, don't allow us to really do anything on a city level, so um you know, that's again, another complexity that I think that, you know, anything that's within our control, we should have teeth to go along with it. And um, that's with the understanding that some things like what you talked about, Jordan, we don't have teeth.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the the one of the ways when it comes to, you know, an example like housing, like the 10 year housing plan is recognizing where we don't have teeth and both providing at least some strategy for trying to address the lack of having teeth. So in the 10 year housing plan, for example, there's discussion about um sort of lobbying efforts to try to re get back that localized control over things like short term rentals. But ultimately, I think being open about where we don't have power is really important because we need to understand that in order to create um policies or or goals that are realistic and actionable. You know, uh, what's the acronym? Smarty goals are really important for something like a a regional plan and probably not all of um the goals and policies in the current regional plan meet that. And if you're not familiar with that acronym, it's Smarty stands for specific, measurable, attainable, realistic. I'm forgetting what the what the T stands for.
Timely.
Timely, thank you. Thank you. I figured someone would someone would have heard that before, so um yeah. That notion of teeth is really important. All right. The city has been implementing inclusion of diverse populations recently, rare assessment, creation of indigenous commission, continue and expand this good work. This was Jean. Um, I think that is really clear, but any any other uh
Self explanatory. Yeah, thank you.
Great. All right. Address climate impacts within the context of unequal impacts on diverse populations and communities and include those most negatively impacted in the planning process. Such a yeah, just a really important topic in terms of disparate impacts of things like climate change. And again, Jean, that's yours.
Well, and one of the things that I didn't think of when I wrote this, but um, you know, when we talk about like a rare assessment and stuff like that, reaching people that are not going to be on the city website or something like that. If there's a way of including, you know, in a in a very kind of intentional way, including some of the data that has been developed from some of those outreach, you know, um, um, practices that are already underway. Or, you know, inclusion in a, you know, kind of intentional way of when we go back to partnerships, things like NACA and stuff like that, you know, um, just to get voices, you know, and um, not just to do it, as I said at the last meeting, as window dressing, but really taking those ideas and and working it in. Maybe that's that's one thing that can be addressed through partnerships, which I think you're doing a great job of. I'm I'm not saying that, you know, you're not doing it already, but we got to stay intentional on that.
Yeah, and um, we're always looking for for places we can do better too, so um we this is a, I feel like a great opportunity to put in a plug um that I'm trying to remember if I put in this plug before, but if you have groups, events that you know of that are typically under that represent typically underserved communities or populations. Please let us know if it's a group that you think we should be talking to. We've had some success already with um the Commission on um Diversity and Inclusion reaching out and suggesting that we um present, give a regional plan presentation to a group that represents children or teenagers and young adults with with disabilities and um that was a really great conversation that we had with that group. I think the the acronym is NAICOP. But we're always looking for those opportunities where we can um include people that may be absent from kind of our you know, traditional engagement methods such as the city's community forum, um even events that we booth at. Um, so please, please reach out to us with those ideas if you have them. So thanks, thanks for that in for the plug there. And just to, sorry, I missed the 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 climate change aspect of the regional plan um and the existing regional plan was pretty minimal when the plan was adopted. We did have a major plan amendment that was connected to the carbon neutrality plan. But, you know, there is a a little bit of equity um language in there about disparate impacts. But I think adding on to that, you know, there's a lot more research about things like the heat island effect, which we know in some of our neighborhoods that have less tree coverage, that's going to be an issue in the future. The the issue of water usage when it comes to climate change and who does and who doesn't sort of get access to water um or or what that access looks like. I think that's a really important conversation. So a lot of different considerations there that are not in the current regional plan, so great opportunity. We know now the impact of unexpected pandemic, this awareness can be a guiding principle. So I think getting at the idea of resilience there to to change and Jean, um, you're up again on that one. There's anything else you wanted to add? And you're muted if you are there. If not, I'll move on.
Yeah, we can
I'm I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. Um, nothing more to add.
Okay, great. All right, address through ordinance or uh, the dress to ordinance or the negative effects of short term rental, trash noise, et cetera. Yeah, we had some conversation there about short term rentals. Um, any additional comments on on that one? Questions, comments?
I don't have anymore.
All right. Integrate on all levels of planning the simple question, who benefits? Jean, uh, yeah. Great comment.
I like this because it's just kind of like, you know, this is part of a consciousness shift that we need to have, you know, overall, not just Flagstaff, I mean, the whole world uh because of, again, the huge disparities and the privileging of uh making money and stuff. So I just think that's the most foundational question we can ask, who benefits?
Jean, this is Marcella, Commissioner Pino. I I want to add to this because the other thing that I was thinking about as I was looking at this plan is, you know, it's kind of a component of change management, but it's essentially talking about what we're doing, but doesn't really say like, why should I care? And how can I participate? So I almost wonder if there's if there is a way to say kind of like more directly tie those components in. So, you know, for example, like who this benefits and you could say like populations or whatever ties back to strategic goal lies. And then how do I get engaged? And it could either reference like specific voting that's happening or specific work groups, or there could be some sort of action that's incorporated for the you know, for an everyday citizen that's not really directly tied here. So I don't really know how to do that because it's a big ask, but maybe there's a couple of places that it's more, you can kind of pilot that and see see if that connects with people.
Excellent.
I'm trying to capture that here, so I'm kind of framing that as if I'm a reader of the document and I'm just a citizen. It's, how can I be involved in the outcome of a policy or a goal? Does that kind of get at what you were you were saying?
Yeah, and I think it's going to be unsustainable to do at like the individual policy level. But maybe it can be done like in chunks by like the thematic areas like climate change. So if I'm a citizen who's really passionate about climate change, you can be like, did you know there's a work group or there's a commission meeting every month and talks about this, or there's a a policy that's up for voting. Um, like, you know, maybe that's kind of like a rotating section. That gets looked at or referenced. Um, or, you know, at the very least, it can say there can be like some overview on in general, how do you engage with this plan? Like, how do you use this plan to advance your work? How do you um participate to support the work of the people that are engaged in in executing components of the plan? Just, I think, more around the engagement piece.
This, I'm really think this is just a really great comment. I think this is not something that I had picked up. I don't think we've um had this comment before, but you know, one of the things that the regional plan says when it comes to implementation is that the intention is for the plan to, of course, you know, we have kind of state statutes in terms of what the what the regional plan is supposed to be doing. The decisions that it's impacting from the city government level. But in our plan, it explicitly says that the plan is also supposed to guide private decision making or to help private decision making. But I don't know of any policies that were necessarily specifically designed around private decision making or decision making at the grassroots level. And I think that's a really, really potentially powerful um edit that we can make to the next regional plan. So I just, there's a a lot of thought. I think that'll that'll be a really good talking point as we move forward. So I just want to say thank you for that. The discussion
Oh, yeah. No problem. And I'm happy to kind of brainstorm what that could look like or, you know, talk offline about a couple of ideas, but yeah, happy to help.
Great, thank you. All right. The needs of diverse populations, ethnic LGBTQ plus, et cetera. And the safety and well being of those populations could be addressed more specifically in the plan.
Yeah, I think that one was mine and I just felt like uh, you know, the the plan as it exists kind of talks around those, but doesn't really address needs specifically and it uh, I don't know if that's um because there are people in our community, and we know this, that don't want to address the needs of those uh populations, but um, but I do. So I would like to see that be um more explicit, I guess.
Yeah.
In the future.
Yeah, I think the language in the current plan is very generalized in this regard.
You know, I totally agree. And, you know, I I hadn't even thought about this, but it's 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 part of that paradigm shift where we start not only saying um that we value the safety, but that we're going to actually intentionally include it in our planning. I I I just want to put an exclamation point after that.
Right.
Yeah.
It matters that much. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think this is going to be really critical when it comes to our public engagement, which we are sort of just at the start of really ramping that up. And we have some sort of unique options that that we're considering and putting before a city council in terms of getting better representation from underserved populations in our community. People who may have been missed in the last planning process. So um, that conversation is ongoing in terms of what that might look like, but um we're looking at innovative ways to make sure that we can get those people into the conversation and then stay in the conversation throughout the process.
That's good to hear.
And then lastly, on the opportunities, consider COVID impact, people working from home, changes in local businesses, et cetera. And this was Dee.
I think that was mine. I forgot about that. But, you know, in terms of uh this being in the um uh, opportunity section. That I think that has changed things in terms of who needs to have transportation to get where they're going and who doesn't. That that's not the same as it was 10 years ago and uh the local businesses obviously wouldn't be the same as they were 10 years back, but but th- this is a a different 10 year future than it would have been without COVID. I think that uh the COVID impact has shifted the way we do things, uh, how we shop. What gets delivered to our homes rather than going out to buy it, uh, what trips we take, all of that. It it affects a lot of it's changed our lifestyle. I guess that's what I really mean by this. And so COVID hopefully will dissipate out uh over time, but I think that the lifestyle changes, classes online, working from home, ordering things from Amazon rather than running to the mall. All of that is changed our lifestyle already and uh some of that is going to stick, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. This is so um it's so important for the regional plan, especially because we're talking about the future use of land and what, how we use our land is a product of um, you know, what are what our lives consist of. Are we you know, for just to sort of throw in an example, in our zoning code, which sort of regulates um what can be built where and what that development looks like. You know, we have parking standards for businesses, for commercial businesses. And parking takes up a lot of space.
Yeah.
It's, you know, um, and I'm sure if, you know, if you drive down Fourth Street, we have a huge paved parking lot that maybe has you know, a handful of cars in it and And at one point, that was a product of, of need, of transportation need and potentially possibly, you know, the zoning requirements at the time. But, you know, does something like COVID kind of bring that to the forefront in terms of, do we, what are our regulations saying in terms of what we need as a built environment? And is that actually connected to how people are living? So really, I don't have the answer there, but that's a really important question for, for the next regional plan.
I think it is a really important question, and I think you're going to need a crystal ball.
If only.
Right.
Yeah. Great comment. All right. And so any, any other comments or questions on the opportunities front? Anything that people want to see added or amended? Hearing none?
I just don't want to, I just don't want to lose this, this, this thing that Marcella brought up. Boy, if there could be a section even, or, you know, a section in, when you publish this thing about, you know, opportunities to be involved or something like that, you know, goes back to Marcel's concept of, I mean, comment about having a table of contents, you know, people can see that and then just flip to that section, yeah, I want to do something. I just want to say that again, that this is a great opportunity for invitation, because that makes people not feel so hopeless.
I didn't realize it was locked, sorry.
Yeah. So I added in some, some notes on this comment, you know, the who benefits question. But does anyone, either Eugene or Marcella, feel so inclined to add a note in your own language about that opportunity? I think that could be helpful if, if one of you has access at the moment to adding that.
Hi, Jordan. Yeah, I can add it. I've got it open. I'll drop something in.
Great. I will, thanks for doing that. I will, I'll move on to the, to the last section here while you do that. That shouldn't impact your ability to, to type. All right. So lastly, on to threats. So start out with accountability of political bodies for adherence to regional plan. Jean? Want to add anything to that or kind of describe?
This is both a, a comment and also a question because, again, it goes into, you know, the whole teeth thing. I don't know how much, this is guiding principles, this regional plan. So even probably our own city council doesn't have to listen to it. But, you know, it also involves the, you know, the inter-jurisdictional thing. So I'm not trying to be pie in the sky here, but, you know, somehow or another. I think what, I keep going back to what Marcella was saying, we've got to appeal to people's better angels, you know, to, you know, this is it, we're all in this together.
Yeah.
Not just, you know, like with a stick holding over somebody for accountability, but anyway, so. It's complex. I get that, but I think it needs, it needed to be stated.
Yeah, I think anytime we're adopting kind of a, a policy document or a planning document that doesn't necessarily, you know, change law, we run into this problem of accountability or kind of the, the idea of that dusty plan on the shelf that kind of never gets looked at. I don't think with our last one, we didn't, we didn't get there. We do use it. And we have a number of ways in which we are required to use it. So kind of the, the most common use of the regional plan would be for rezoning cases or annexation cases where there is a requirement in our zoning code to have a finding of conformance with the regional plan when it comes to this city council's final decision. But again, in the regional plan, it talks about influencing annual budget decisions. It talks about influencing, you know, capital improvement funding. It talks about, again, that idea of impacting private decisions. A lot of those other sort of not as process-oriented goals and policies or the implementation strategies. We don't necessarily always see the regional plan getting referenced, for example, in something like annual budget decisions. And I think too, the, the point that keeps coming up about trade-offs and understanding the impact, without that information, it makes kind of some of those, I'll call them tangential decision-making processes. It's difficult to bring the regional plan in when you don't necessarily have a sense of where the trade-offs are. And that that really impacts accountability. I think both from kind of the public standpoint, even, you know, not necessarily understanding what we're holding city council or, or city staff accountable for without some of that additional information is really, really difficult. So that was my sort of rambly response to that comment, but a, a really good one again. Institutional structural racism. So example is a, is lack of legal protection for the cultural value of the peaks and legal prevention of the cultural environmental destruction caused by snowball. Jean?
Yeah, we've already had this discussion, but as we've moved along, I've also thought about things like, you know, kind of shaping or using existing resources to shape responses that aren't there in the law, like for instance with, you know, water. You know, we're in a, we're heading into a crisis and even if it's reclaimed water, can that reclaim, how much, how much reclaimed water that could be used for something else is being? So there, there is an option through things like city policy on, you know, a hierarchy of who gets the reclaimed water kind of thing, where you can, you know, have some impact.
Yeah. Absolutely.
That's just one example.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think this is also appropriate under threats just because, you know, in sort of built into the definition of institutional or structural is that it kind of permeates throughout many facets of, of society. And, you know, when, when you don't recognize where those are, they have, the threat is that they will continue. Right. So on to the next one. Rapidity of growth and acceleration of climate change was, Jean, you again, I think this one is just, we just have so much information now about climate change and how that is, you know, particularly going to impact the Southwest. We kind of have a really good sense of that, and that's always going to be a threat to livelihood here as we move forward without action. So I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add to that, but.
No.
Great. If many homes are owned by people who do not reside in Flagstaff, the character will change and sense of community in the city will decrease. And that's D.
Yeah, that was something that I had added because of the, you know, we've already talked about the short-term rentals and all of that. I have a, a friend who lives in Sedona and she was talking one day about how she's the only one who lives there. That everybody else in her neighborhood is somebody who's just staying there. And it doesn't, she, she was lamenting about the lack of community that she felt and lack of connection that she feels to her, her neighborhood. And I think that that is a threat. I put it on the threat list. I think it's something that we're, we're looking at.
Yeah.
And, and also the last item here about housing costs was mine as well. And we have a really widening gap between the number of, you know, the, the people that we need to keep this community going and their, their capacity to actually live among us. That is getting worse. So those were the things that I added to the threat list. I don't know if anybody has anything to add to that, but that was my intent.
Yeah, any other comments or questions on, on those?
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair point. I think that the culture comments, right? Like when we talk about the, the vision and mission of the city and kind of what we're even doing as a commission and what we're representing. I think maybe we can think about how the culture weaves through the plan in a little bit more of a distinct way. I don't have a concrete suggestion for that. But I do think that the, the sections often read very dry and don't necessarily help us see like how that policy, in some ways, it's very clear, like this policy enables a healthier and better way of life. In other instances, it might not be as clear. So maybe this is an example of like how, how housing is a little bit more of a complicated subject. And, and who, how are we prioritizing who we are welcoming, right? So I don't, like I said, I don't have a concrete answer for that, just a reflection.
Great, thank you. Jean, did you have a, a comment? I see you unmuted.
Oh, no, 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 I don't.
Okay. Great. So that is it in terms of the ideas. So just really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this, the conversation that we've had and yeah, this is, this is a really rich set of ideas here to include in, in this process. The last thing that we have invited commissioners to do with this process, and this is optional. So you can choose to do this or not to do this, is we, there is, this system comes with the ability to rate ideas on a scale of one to 10 in terms of how important you think that idea is. In cases where there's maybe been more thoughtful deliberation, that process can feel a little weird in terms of, you know, we've, we've had the comments, well, I kind of want to rate all of these a 10. So I guess I want to leave it open to you all in terms of whether that feels necessary or whether you would like to see that done for what you have put together here. Or whether that seems unnecessary or maybe harmful to, to the ideas that have been populated here. Any thoughts on that?
Commissioners chime in? Do you have?
I'm just kind of like what Jordan said, everything's a 10. You know, it'd be really difficult to do. And I think it goes back to kind of weaving these principles in, these weaving of equity issues and trying to change from, you know, structural racism to structural inclusion, you know, kind of doing it intentionally with language and, you know, the invitations to participation and stuff like that. But I would have personally a very difficult time rating it.
I mean, I, I understand what your point, Jean, and I think that there's definitely some of these that are really difficult to rate as a not 10, especially when it gets into the nuances of some of the suggestion genes. Some of the suggestions, Jean, that you have on like housing and, but I think some of the like structural questions perhaps we can talk about or vote like, you know, the, for example, like the action, action-based opportunity versus like a table of contents versus, I don't know. I'm not sure if, if that would really be, really be helpful. I guess the question for you, Jordan, would be, what happens after this is rated? And how are these ratings used to inform, or how is this used to inform next steps?
Yeah, good question. So our intention was basically to use that information sort of qualitatively. Imagine a report where we kind of summarize key themes that we found throughout all of the various Swats that we did. I guess the idea from, from our perspective was that there might be themes that come up that were actually rated pretty low. So, you know, maybe there are things more about the document that are, that were identified, that, you know, certain sections were hard to read, but overall not super important. So the idea is maybe it would help us to prioritize a little bit in terms of using the information that we've gathered in sort of upcoming public meetings and presenting this to, to the public. And, you know, just continuing that conversation. Oh, go, go ahead.
Is, is this something that you would need us to do now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm not hearing enthusiasm for, for doing this. Some of, some of the commissioners are not, not expressing what they're thinking about this, but I, I feel like we have presented a lot of things that we think are important.
Yeah, and I guess just to add to what this SWAT has looked like has been a little bit different kind of throughout the process. So for some of our commission meetings, it's been kind of like a popcorn of ideas, just really quick ideas in a short period of time. And that has felt a little bit more helpful when we've done the reading exercise. But I do want to emphasize that we have had a number of commissions opt to not do this when we've had more of a deliberative process for the SWAT. So I just want to affirm that that's an okay decision to, to make as well.
I appreciate that. Are there, are there, is, is there anyone on the commission that would like to do this? Can, can you unmute and let me know?
Heidi, just to add, I mean, I wouldn't, this is Marcella, I wouldn't mind doing it if it's helpful to Jordan. I definitely want this to be something that's useful. So if it's too hard to digest like this, I think we can make it work, but would love to hear what others think.
I can ditto what Marcella just said.
Any other commissioners? I know Christine, Claire and Mandy haven't chimed in too much, but any, any thoughts on, on that?
So this is Commissioner Tucci. I kind of mirror what Jean said. I feel like everybody gave really good feedback and I kind of wanted to fault just to rating it all as a 10. But also if it is, you know, more helpful for the work you're doing to dig into it a little bit more than that, you know, I'd be amenable to that position as well.
This is Claire. I was wondering if like how the other commissioners might feel about maybe just identifying like some, like if we were to communicate what we felt like were important themes, like takeaways. Like, because it seems like there might be some overlap between some of these items, but I'm also available. I think we still have technically scheduled like another 30 minutes. So I'm, I'm open to, to ranking them or, or like continuing the conversation about it if other people are, are also still available to do so.
Well, would it be possible for us to just run through them and let me, let me say it this way. Run through them and assume that any of, all of them are a 10 unless we want to address one as not.
Absolutely. Yep.
What does anybody think that that would work? Jessica. Jessica, did you have a comment?
I think you're talking, Jessica, but we can't hear you.
That might be.
Maybe some, I see Jessica typing, maybe there's some technical difficulties.
Maybe, okay.
So I guess Jessica was saying that she just has a note here. Please type in the chat or raise your hand if you need to leave before the meeting is adjourned. So I can note it for the meeting.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
So I guess what I'm hearing is the that it it sounds like commissioners are comfortable with the. Oh, yeah, it looks like Jessica's mic isn't working. So always, always fun time with teams. But yeah, so it sounds like the assumption of a 10 is is okay with commissioners and and just the idea being to identify things that maybe should be prioritized less.
Remember? It might be. I'm sorry, I wasn't muted, I apologize.
Not a problem. So I guess the easiest way to do this is why don't? If there is something you would like to identify as different than a 10, just unmute and and sort of say what you think and and maybe why. And then I will just go ahead and I'll be the sole raider for this unless there's disagreement. In which case we can open it up to commissioners to actually rate that particular idea. So if anyone has something that they want to identify as as not a 10, feel free to chime in and I'll I'll sort of mark it where we think appropriate.
Jordan, could I ask that we do it like we did the comments, you know, do it screen by screen? So just start with strength. It'd be easier to read on my screen.
Yep. Zoom in there, that's helpful.
Hey, Jordan, I don't know that any of these, since they're already strengths, any of these are suggestions for changes? So I'm not sure if you want these prioritized.
Yeah, I guess that's um. I'm hopefully leaving that up to you to to decide if you want to sort of prioritize anything. But if not, then then I'll just leave this as is and move on to weaknesses.
I mean, unless the group, the only other thing I could think of is if the group wants to say like, here's what we liked the most. Do not change this as a vote of 10.
Sure. I'm not seeing any indication of of rating on this one. So I'll just move on to weaknesses, if that's okay.
It sounds good.
All right, anything here we want to sort of identify as as not a 10?
If we wanted to go down to a nine, I don't know how to say this. The thing for planning for public transportation is actually incorporated in other things. So if you wanted to, we could. But otherwise, I think it's all pretty tenny.
I see Claire's hand up.
Yeah, Claire.
Uh, yeah, I guess in terms of um, like the focus of our of our group or of our commission, I would say maybe items that are like more specifically related to like diversity, equity and inclusion would be would, I think, just from the purposes of like our group might be more. I don't, I don't, it's it's like a hard thing to say, like they'd be more like more of a 10 than other items. But just within the, I'm assuming in conversations with other groups, maybe there's been like like other focuses or other items that other groups have also touched on. So I think just coming from our group, maybe things that are like more directly focused on on, yeah, like on diversity or equity issues would would be, I think, from the perspective of our commission, probably like a more like rated higher. But I mean, I think that we had a really like in-depth conversation, commissioners had like a really in-depth conversation about like the strengths, weaknesses and, you know, opportunities. And so I feel pretty confident that through this conversation, anything that's been put on there is important to the group and does obviously like impact, you know, diversity awareness or like or needs in our community. So unless anyone disagrees, but not not the, I don't know. I think maybe it's the afternoon and people are fading. But I think that, at least in my mind, as it relates to diversity, I really think that some of the comments about like the the plan more explicitly and more like really directly stating that, you know, equity, like those equity elements are not as like as addressed in the in the plan. And so out of everything, I hope that that would be like a big takeaway. Like, just as one commercial, as one commissioner, I hope that that would be a big takeaway from like talking with our commission is like, there's definitely, although there are strengths, like, of course, there's still, there's there's opportunity to address some of these weaknesses because this is a regional plan that's not going to be necessarily changed for, you know, a couple, a few more years. So, you know, now now is our like, like now is our chance to say that this is really important and should be include, it should be included and addressed in in like future planning. Because it's, you know, take be about another 10 years or something until the next regional plan or?
Yeah, so we're required by state law to update. We adopt or re-adopt a plan every 10 years. So it'll be, we're doing a full plan update this time. That's been traditionally what has happened, but.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to wait another 10 years to address some of some of the things that the commission has identified. And so especially because in 10 years, like, I mean, we know that the people, like, we know that there are going to be people in this community who are going to be more impacted than others. And so, you know, yeah, I don't want to wait another 10 years once this one is approved to address some of these issues. But yeah, I'll leave that up to the group.
So I guess I'll just, Claire, thank you for for all of those comments. So the other way that we can do this is in with that idea of kind of emphasizing certain comments. We can also just do it that way. Instead of assuming a 10, we can use the 10 to emphasize the ideas as well, if if that works maybe better.
That sounds good. And just a second, I like Claire said, I think that that's the resulting takeaway.
So anyone want to make a a motion for a 10 on this list? I'm looking at probably all of these except the appendix B comment and public transportation. All of the others are specifically within your domain. Any any thoughts on including excluding the the two comments that I mentioned in in identifying them as a 10?
I think, oh, sorry, please.
As long as the other two are still a nine, because they are important.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, how do we want to do this? Maybe. Yeah, we can do it that way. So this is, this is what I am. There we go. How does that look?
Does anyone have an objection to that? I hear no objections.
Great. All right, let's move on to opportunities. Anything here that that you don't want to rate a 10?
I think you could move the last one to a nine just because it will, it will manifest in other you know, comments from other commissions and all kinds of things.
Right.
Probably the same with the, yeah, the other one for awareness and the short term rental.
So this this one here.
And then the one right above the short term rental, because it's similar to these comment on the COVID impact.
Sorry, just to make sure I'm getting, so it's these two here?
I think so, but yeah, that that's my suggestion. But of course, we can all chime in.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
But that also sounds good to me. That's the, this is Commissioner Hardy.
Great, thank you. So this this comment on kind of the notion of teeth having teeth when it comes to certain topic areas is not necessarily specific to your domain. But hugely important to consider just as a general lens for goals and policies. What do we think on that one? Claire?
Um, I think that including the strategies is really important. I know that it's, I think, if you can correct me if my understanding is incorrect, but it's my understanding that the way that the regional plan is laid out is that it's not necessarily like, I mean, I think it says like pretty clearly somewhere, I forget where. It's a really long document that like the what the regional plan is not is like ordinances or, you know, any like, it's just, it's just a kind of like a guide. And so I think that that's something that, I don't know, I feel somewhat like fatigued a little bit talking about it because I know, because I think that, like, I know it's like been part of the conversation in our community for like the past year. And one of the things that I personally just kind of keep bumping bumping up against is like, I really want there to be more like more strategies and for including more like, you know, more direct, more, you know, the more teeth as it was put like, but it's hard because we can't really, you know, I know that like the city, like the the regional plan can include strategies. But then you kind of get back into that, the weaknesses thing of like, well, some of those strategies will like conflict with each other. Because, you know, as we've seen in Flagstaff for forever, where we have kind of some competing interests. And but that's where I think that, for example, I think it was Commissioner Pino had said, like, you know, if we could really highlight the why of why this is important. And maybe I'm just getting a little disillusioned, but I think that there are people who do benefit from a Flagstaff being not equitable. And, you know, it's it's in their interest that, you know, it's in their financial, in their, yeah, it's in their financial interest and their economic interest in to maintain the status quo. And that's really, you know, disheartening. So I think, you know, I'm all for including like more teeth in those strategies. But again, I don't know, like, ultimately, I just, I don't know. I mean, maybe that's the thing, I just don't know how that how that could be possible. If then those strategies will like compete with each other. I would think maybe like, you know, I know that the city is, I had is has engaged in like priority based budgeting. And so that's supposed to be like a way that we incorporate like how the city makes decisions about things. But it's also not formalized, is my understanding, but maybe it's changed. But and so part of my concern is that in giving, you know, I guess maybe I'd want to say like specifically, if we were going to include this point, like that those strategies should be like changing or like not even, maybe not even legally, but just like administrative, administrate administratively, like what can, like what's in our control and what's not in our control and focusing more so on the things that are in our control. Because there's a lot that's out of our control. But, you know, at the same, and and I don't know if we'd be able to like put something in there that says like, unless it was something kind of vague, like, you know, review strategies for equity concerns or something like that, like, not saying that that's what I want to put in there. But like, I don't know how specific we would be able to get in the in the document. So I don't know, but you know, that's why I I guess I just, I'm not really sure. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts about that. But part, I guess part of my concern is that those strategies, the strategy, any strategies could then be maybe like used against like people in the community who really like are not benefiting from the status quo. And so I'm, I guess I'm just not really sure what that could look like. But maybe someone out there can dream a dream, but I'm not really sure.
So where are we with this one? Are we? Claire, are you suggesting leaving it at a nine? Or what would you, that that's not a zero, it's just not as high as the other priorities in the list?
I think, I think maybe where I would be at is I mean, I think, I mean, I guess maybe I like personally think that the strategies piece is really important. But maybe we could somehow like alter the language a little bit to show that it's like specifically like that because because even in this plan, since equity wasn't as already wasn't as included with even just the language, like maybe there's a way that we can like emphasize that this is, you know, not just like strategies for, you know, upholding like the status quo, but strategies that can really, you know, benefit people on the on the equity from like this equity perspective. But
When promoting our diverse populations.
Yeah. And making sure that, you know, they, yeah, that they're also, you know, have a place in the future and that in the next 10 years of Flagstaff and the next 20 years of Flagstaff that, you know, everyone is going to have a place in that future. Because right now it's, it doesn't always, you know, seem that way. But yeah, I'm not sure maybe if it's a language thing or, but it almost feels like unless we unless we really emphasize that, then if we say that those strategies aren't as important as something else, then it's saying like. unless we really emphasize that, then if we say that those strategies aren't as important as something else, then it's saying like that it's not, I don't know. I mean, I know we're saying everything is important, but I, I think the strategies are important because it will help realize the this end goal.
Jean, I think this was originally your comment on the opportunity list, is that right? Are you able to craft an amendment for Jordan to put in about being more specific about planning for change that would legally protect or promote? I don't know. Do you have?
No, I really appreciate Claire's comments because planning for change, the way it says right now, planning for change legally, that could be used a lot of different ways. And that's a really good point. So strategies for including more teeth in planning for equity. Maybe just ignore, maybe I don't know about legally and ordinances. Claire, do you have some suggestions for the language? Because I really take your point. These things can be used in ways or not intended.
So I guess maybe what I was thinking is, so we have, like in the regional plan, there's the like it lists the policies and like how the different sections of the plan like correlate, like what to different policies. And so I think the idea would be like, we'd want these strategies to ideally, right? Like then the strategies would link up with the policies. The strategies are kind of like the, in my mind, the strategies are like the real plan because the strategies are like the actionable parts of the plan. Everything in my mind, it's kind of like the plan is kind of like an outline and or like a guide. But the strategies piece is the part that can actually be like administrated or the part that can be legislated or the part that can be like acted upon. And so I think that that strategies piece, I guess I'm not really sure how to put it, but like, I think that like the it's the development and the like that the actionable nature of those strategies is really important. And I think it's not even just like the strategies need to be clear, they need to like exist. And I think that if anything, those strategies should be like a bigger part of the plan. They should be like, you know, what are our options? What can we realistically do over the next 10 years? So that, you know, yeah, so that our diverse population has a home here in 10 years. Because I can tell you that, you know, a lot of people like aren't going to have a home here in 10 years, whether it's due to like, as we, as we've discussed already, like, and as the plan kind of goes over, like, whether it's climate change or like water or housing, like in 10 years, there are going to be people who aren't going to be able to live here. Because they're not like, because even if they're included in the plan, like the strategies are not, they might not exist so that 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 like the city can actually like act upon them.
We're calling for
I would say like more of a focus on the strategies if possible, like I would love to see like, yeah, I don't know, just more. Yeah, just because the strategies in my mind are like because the the policy piece would be the ordinances and we already have those. And I think, but it's the strategies pieces, the administrative piece of it that is not necessarily in like, it, I feel like it doesn't get as much attention. And I honestly feel like sometimes governments can get really bogged down in like policy. And if we can have a, you know, we can look at our city code, like we have policy. But unless we are able to like act upon our policy or, you know, and and too, I mean, I guess it is important to create new policy. But it's not necess, like the plan says that that's not necessarily like the goal of it. So I'm not really sure, like, but I think like specific and and those whole, that whole smart goals thing, like, it would be great if but but that also, I think, is maybe why that is not included in the regional plan intentionally. Because then that's an opportunity for people to not pass the plan. And I feel like we saw a lot of this with the housing plan is like you needing to be very strategic about the language. Because otherwise you'll give people like, like in some ways, being vague is good because you can, you know, maybe not like get people to disagree with you. But at the same time, like, I don't know, and I guess that's, that's a matter of balance for, you know, city administrators to figure out. But I, I don't know, I think that it is important that if all this attention is being paid to policy, that we should actually have some real strategies on what we can do to address some of the weaknesses while also promoting the strengths. But I'm not sure.
Been doing some wordsmithing here.
Yeah, I'm wondering if go ahead, Dee.
No, I was just wondering if he has hit on the intent.
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, listening to Claire, I wonder if we should change clear to focus on strategies for including more teeth for equity, specific actions that can be taken to enhance equity and inclusion through the topic areas and respective goals and policies. What do you think of that, Claire?
Yeah, I think that that sounds great. Thank you so much, Jordan and Dan and Jean.
But
Sure, Jean, could you say what you said again? I don't think I caught all of the changes that.
I was just reading focus on strategies for including more teeth in planning for equity, specific actions that can be taken to enhance equity and inclusion throughout topic areas and the respective goals and policies, just the stuff that you wrote. I think is good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's great. Thank you for that.
Push that up. There you go.
There we go. Great, great discussion. Thank you for that. All right, so the last two here, we'll try to, I know we're, we're about a minute until the end of the scheduled meeting time. So I think these, these top two were the additions that Marcella made, I believe, while we were in the discussion phase. So I think, I guess I'm going to assume that that those are a 10. There was a lot of discussion about that about those items.
Yeah.
Any objections there?
Have any comments about that?
This looks good to me.
Me too. Anyone else?
All right, hearing none, I will move on to the last section. All right, so we have so we've got a few here that are specific to kind of your commission. Sorry, didn't mean to do that one. But so these two, what do we think about accountability? And we have climate change, so we have accountability, climate change, and then we have community character here. Where do we think those three?
Well, I'm the one that added community character and I would not put it as as the the top of what our commission is about. I'd still like it left on the list if that's agreeable to everyone. Yes.
Sure, so it seems like we've been defaulting those not specifically related to to a nine. So that's what I would be inclined to to do here. But any, any amendments to to these?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Marcella?
That that sounds good to me.
Good, okay.
Ditto, ditto.
Great.
Okay.
Hearing no others, no other comments on that. I think that is a wrap for this. So again, want to just thank you all for the tremendous input and conversation. Was really glad to make the extra time to to have this conversation with you all. So thank you. I will send a copy of this to Jessica so that she can forward that out to you guys and you can see the ideas that you've put together. In the meantime, if there is something else that you want to relay to the comprehensive planning team, don't hesitate to reach out to me or Sarah Decter. Happy to talk to you whenever, really. So, and then again, just one final plug for any groups that you know of or events that you think we would that we should go to, people that we should be talking to, please reach out with those ideas too. You know, we do a lot of work on that front, identifying events and and people to talk to. But always really excited to add additional people, groups, events to our lists as well. So just finishing off with that final plug. So thank you again. Anything else?
Now, well, thank you for taking this time to give the commission this much voice. This is a really much appreciated thing. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Really appreciate it, Jordan.
Absolutely.
Okay, if, and and you got what you needed from us for now?
Yep, yep, I have what I need. So thanks again, I'll sign off here.
Okay, and it's 3:33 PM and I believe that the Commission on Diversity Awareness is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Talk to you later.
Thanks, all. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.